I hereby call the fourth day of the seventh special session of the twentieth Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Amen.
This is Speaker, nine, I mean ten members are present.
With that, Congress has quorum this morning. Next item.
Item four, Mrs. Speaker, reading of the Journal.
Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good rainy day to you and all honorable members as well as our staff and all those who are observing our session this morning. I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Any discussion? If none, we shall vote. All those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the Journal say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item five, Mrs. Speaker, presidential communications, there are none.
Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none also, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, also none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, also, there is none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Order of the day, item fourteen, standing committee reports, we do not have any, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, none. Item sixteen, assignment of measures in communications, we have a referral sheet number twenty dash one oh six.
Chairman and members, take note. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, there are none, Mrs. Speaker. Item eighteen, bill calendar.
First bill.
Speaker.
Chairman Golan, you have the floor.
Speaker, I wish to withdraw my bill, with order of business for today.
Can we run down the current ones and then do, after you finish with these, then I'll yield the floor to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Golan. First bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash two forty-six CD one for first reading from your committee on General. CB number twenty dash two forty-six CD one, it's a bill for an act to award a seven percent increase in the annual salary for all full-time employees of the Federated States of Micronesia's national government public service system and for other purposes.
Chairman Romolo.
Yield the floor to Chairman Berman.
Motion to defer action on the said bill to tomorrow's session.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered, or the CB number twenty dash two forty-six be deferred to tomorrow's session. Any objection? We will vote.
Speaker, may I just ask the reason why?
Care to venture an answer? Chairman Berman.
Speaker, thank you very much. Well, good morning to you and all members and those who are observing our session this morning. Speaker, I have a feeling that this bill might be killed today because we only have ten members. And the fact that we're gonna face Medicare increase on deduction and of course, Social Security been going up every year, but salaries been freeze, I really wanted us to really take this little bit seriously then, because I really don't want this bill to die today here.
Speaker.
Chairman.
Move for the previous question.
It's been moved and seconded that debate be closed. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Debate is now closed. We will now vote for the deferment of CB number twenty dash two forty-six. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash two forty-six has been deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, the next bill is CB number twenty dash two ninety-one for second reading. CB number twenty dash two ninety-one is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of seven million dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Gochay, Pompe and Chuk States and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move to defer to Wednesday's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash two ninety-one be deferred to Wednesday's calendar. No, no discussion, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor of deferring CB number twenty dash two ninety-one to Wednesday's calendar say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash two ninety-one has been deferred to Wednesday's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash two ninety-three, CD three for second reading. CB number twenty dash two ninety-three, or yeah, two ninety-two, CD three, it's a bill for an act to amend sections one, three, eight and nine of Public Law number twenty dash one thirty-one, as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty dash one fifty-four and twenty dash one fifty-nine, in order to appropriate eleven million two hundred sixty thousand dollars of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, to provide funding for the National Scholarship and the FSM Trust Fund and for other purposes.
Move to Wednesday's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash two ninety-two, CD three be deferred to Wednesday's calendar. Any discussion? If no discussion, we will vote for the deferment of CB number twenty dash two ninety-two, CD three. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash two ninety-two has been deferred to Wednesday's calendar.
Point of privilege, Mrs. Speaker.
State your point.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Speaker, I would like to introduce the nursing students from Siom that is actually observing our session this morning. Bear with me, I'll read out the entire list and we can give them a round of applause after it. We have from Chuk, Finipa, Soni, from Pompe, Persita, Nuhel. Apologize if my pronunciations are wrong. Another one from Pompe, Jamie Lee, Speter, from Yap, Crystal, Likel, Lesay, from Yap, Sylvia, Sylvia, I'm sorry, maybe I'll yield the floor to Chairman Figu, maybe, Pat, Ilem, Anglung, and from Pompe, Jamie Walber. These are nursing students from Siom that's actually observing our session this morning. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. It's always nice to see members of our community come in and observe our session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, there are none.
Chairman Golan.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw CB twenty dash twenty, two ninety-eight, under order of business for today, for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight be withdrawn and placed on today's bill calendar. Floor Leader, any?
Speaker, I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the said bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that any rule that may impede our action on the said motion be suspended, that may impede our action. Discussion? If none, we will vote on the said motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on today's calendar. Or, I'm sorry, we will now vote on the placement of CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on today's calendar. Any discussion? If none, we will vote on the placement of CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on today's calendar. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight has been placed on today's calendar.
Mrs. Speaker.
Vice Chairman Neath.
Thank you, Speaker. I would, in like manner, I wanna withdraw and place on the bill calendar CB number twenty dash two ninety-six.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash two ninety-six be placed on today's calendar. Any discussions? Let the record reflect that the rules are still suspended. If no discussion, we'll vote on placement of CB number twenty dash two ninety-six on today's calendar. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash two ninety-six has been placed on today's calendar. Chief Clerk, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, two bills were placed. The first one is CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight for first reading. CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number twenty dash sixty-eight, as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty dash seventy-eight and twenty dash eighty-nine, by amending section four thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Short recess, please.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figu, you have the floor.
Move to Wednesday's calendar. Short recess.
Short recess. Chief Clerk, can you please read the title of the current bill?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker. CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number twenty dash sixty-eight, as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty dash seventy-eight and twenty dash eighty-nine, by amending section four thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Chairman Figu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. The motion that I made for deferment was not, let the record reflect that it was not seconded, therefore the motion did not pass. So I move that the said bill be passed on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on first reading. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Golan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. A minor amendment to this proposed bill, on page two, nine, nine thirteen, letter G, after the word "system," comma, and put, insert the word "improvement project" in lieu thereof. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded, the offered oral amendments by Senator Golan.
Speaker.
Chairman, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to suspend the two rules that require, one is to require a written amendment and the other one is to prohibit substantive amendment on second reading.
Second.
This is first. It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend the rules that may impede our action on the said bill. Discussion? If no discussion, we will vote. All those in favor of suspension of the rules on the said bill, say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. Any more discussion on the said bill?
Question.
If no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on the passage of CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on first reading. All those in favor, we will vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman.
Aye.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members, photo four.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash two ninety-six for first reading. CB number twenty dash two ninety-six is a bill for an act to amend Public Law number twenty dash one fifty-five by amending sections two, four and six thereof, for the purpose of changing the use and allot of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap and Pompe and for other purposes.
Chairman Figu, you have the floor.
Move for the passage of the said bill.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed CB number twenty dash two ninety-six on first reading. Discussion?
Question.
Chairman Orsmau, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. May I move for a short recess?
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We are now on discussion on CB number twenty dash two ninety-six.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsmau, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I have a very minor, minute oral amendment that I wish to make on the bill. On page one of the bill, nine thirteen, between Philippines and Honolulu, delete the word "and" and insert a comma in lieu thereof. After the word Honolulu, insert a comma and the word "and" and the phrase "and Guam", "and Guam."
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Chairman Orsmau to CB number twenty dash two ninety-six be adopted. Let the record reflect that the rules are still suspended. Any discussion? If none, we will vote on the offered oral amendments by Chairman Orsmau. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CB number twenty dash two ninety-six, CD one. Any more discussion? If none, we shall vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman.
Yes.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members, photo four.
With that, we have passed CB number twenty dash two ninety-six, CD one, on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Any more bills to place today?
Mrs. Speaker, may I ask for a short recess, please?
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Session, Vice Chairman Conman, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I move to place CB number twenty dash three oh one on bill calendar for today's action. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash three oh one be placed on today's calendar. If no discussion?
Speaker, I take it that the relevant rules are still suspended?
Are still suspended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmau. All those in favor of placement of CB number twenty dash three oh one, say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash three oh one has now been placed on today's bill calendar. Chairman Figu.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash three oh one be adopted by Congress on first reading. Any discussion? If no objection, debate is now closed. We will now vote on the passage of CB number twenty dash three oh one and first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman.
Aye.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members, photo four.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash three oh one on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
None, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess, please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Is back in session. Chairman Golan.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Because of the error on the amendment that I made, Mrs. Speaker, I move that we recall CB twenty dash two ninety-eight. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress recall CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight for first reading.
Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Speaker. Just for my own information, what number of votes required for recall?
Ten.
Ten?
I think it's not recall, it's reconsideration.
Reconsideration. So there's a motion for CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight, the reconsideration of CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight for first reading, and will, subject is non-debatable. So we'll vote by roll call of members.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland.
Yes.
Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman.
Aye.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo.
Good morning. Can you just say what it is? I just arrived and I apologize before I cast my vote.
This is reconsideration of twenty dash two sixty-eight, Bill two sixty-eight.
Two ninety-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, two ninety-eight.
Okay, my neighbor helped me as well. Amen.
Thank you, Chairman.
Amen.
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, eleven members, photo four, for reconsideration.
Please state the bill that has been reconsidered and please read the title.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, now the, on first reading, CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight, it's a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number twenty dash sixty-eight, amended by Public Laws numbers twenty dash seventy-eight and twenty dash eighty-nine, by amending section four thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. In session, Chairman Figu.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw Congress Bill number twenty dash two eighty and put on the bill calendar for action. Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figu.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I withdraw my previous motion.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that the motion by Chairman Figu be withdrawn. Any objection? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Motion withdrawn. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figu.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that Congress pass on first reading Congress Bill number twenty dash two ninety-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress repass CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight on first reading. Chairman Golan, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I have a minor amendment to this bill. On page two, line thirteen, letter G, after the word "system," insert comma, and insert "improvement project," so in lieu thereof. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by Chairman Golan be adopted. Discussion?
Question.
No discussion, we will vote on the offered oral amendment by Chairman Golan. All those in favor of the offered oral amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. And let the record reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended. We now have CB number twenty dash three oh one, CD, well, twenty dash two ninety-eight, CD one. Any more discussion? Short recess. Back in session. We are still on CB two, twenty dash two ninety-eight, CD one, for first reading. Any more discussion? If none, we will vote by roll call of members on CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight, CD one. Chief, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritas, Senator Figuerre, Senator Kooland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath. Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Speaker Semenah, Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. We now... Congress has now passed CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight, CD one, on first reading. Next bill?
Mr. Speaker, the next bill is CB number twenty dash three oh one for first reading.
Short recess, Speaker. I thought that one is already...
Short recess.
We already passed...
Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, next bill?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a bill that I wish to withdraw from your Committee on Ways and Means and put on the calendar... Bill Calendar for action. That is Congress Bill number twenty dash two eighty-eight.
Any second?
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place CB number twenty dash two eighty-eight on today's calendar. Any discussion?
Speaker, short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor. We are now under... On discussion of CB number twenty dash two ninety-eight... Uh, two eighty-eight, that has just been placed, so Chairman Figuerre, please continue.
I move for the passage of Congress Bill number twenty dash two eighty-eight.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty dash two eighty-eight on first reading. Discussion?
Question.
No discussion, we will vote on first reading CB number twenty dash two eighty-eight. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Golland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash two eighty-eight on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Item nineteen, Resolution Calendar. There's none.
Speaker.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion to withdraw CR number twenty dash one forty-eight to...
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass resolution number...
Withdraw, withdraw and place.
Withdraw and place on today's calendar CB number twenty dash one forty-eight.
Yes.
On today's calendar. So it's been moved and seconded that CR number twenty dash one forty-eight be placed on today's calendar for action.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess.
CR.
Congress is back in session. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. During recess, I get a sense that this resolution will die, so motion to withdraw CR twenty dash four, to withdraw. Thank you very much.
The motion is to withdraw its previous motion. Any second? It's been moved and seconded that the motion offered by Senator Perman earlier be withdrawn. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried, the offered placement has now been... Motion for placement has now been withdrawn. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Item twenty, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
Members, if you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward. Next item?
Item twenty-one, Miscellaneous Communications. There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Item twenty-two, Miscellaneous Business.
Any miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Speaker. I know tomorrow we will revisit the seven percent again because it's been deferred to tomorrow's session, and I've been working on it, asking members to support it, mainly because I really do believe in April we're gonna have a Medicare increase in deduction. We've been having deductions everywhere, increasing everywhere that we have oversight hearing or power over. We have oversight on EFSM Petro that we can ask them why they're increasing fuel while we know that the revenue they're receiving is increasing, telecommunication when they have it. We don't question those things. Nowadays, we know when families, workers add on to their family, having a child, or a working father died, then you need to put your mom or mother-in-law insurance. All of these things adds on pressure to an employee of this national government. Having seven percent, some of them will have nine dollars increase, some of them will have twenty dollars increase. So tomorrow, if we have ten members, I'm just gonna have to... We're just gonna have to have to vote on it. Whether it passes or not, at least we put it on for members to think about it. I really want members for today to please really look in... Reach deep into your heart and see if it's... It's not because other states are low and we might increase. Pompeii State, effective April, they put forty dollars on all employees. That's the Pompeii State action effective in April. So I know we're not gonna take employees away from Pompeii State to bring it here because their leaders at the state level doing maybe what they're supposed to do for their employees. So I'm hoping by tomorrow comes, we vote on the seven percent based on things, the facts that increase in insurance, health insurance, and that's one of the most important thing. Every time you add on to your family, you need to put he or she or that baby insured. Everything, something happened in a bigger family that you wanted to help, you can actually bring it, and then it becomes a deduction. This is what I wanted to share to all members. Please think about it. If it's worth seven percent, why not? If it's not, then at least it's with all members to decide. Thank you very much, Speaker.
Short recess.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. We're still in miscellaneous business.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Speaker Semenah?
Thank you. If I may not be out of order, and with the permission of members, I would like to ask to move back to item eighteen, if that's okay? It's the Bill Calendar. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress move back to item number eighteen on... Which is the Bill Calendar. Any objection? If not, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We are now on item number eighteen, Bill Calendar.
Mr. Speaker.
Speaker Semenah, you have the floor.
That sounds strange, huh? Okay, but... If I may be permitted, Mr. Speaker, I move that the following bills be withdrawn from committee and placed on the Bill Calendar for action. Bill number twenty dash two eighty-six, Bill number twenty dash two eighty-seven, and Bill number twenty dash two eighty-nine. These are merely corrective bills to correct some of our existing laws. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's Bill Calendar CB number twenty dash two eighty-six, twenty dash two eighty-seven, and twenty dash two eighty-nine on today's calendar. Any objection? If none, we will vote on placement of the said bills. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We now have CB number twenty dash two eighty-six, twenty dash two eighty-seven, twenty dash two eighty-nine on today's calendar for action. Chief Clerk? First bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first bill, CB number twenty dash two eighty-six for first reading. CB number two... Twenty dash two eighty-six is a bill for an act to further amend Title twenty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended by renumbering the chapters and sections created by Public Laws numbers nineteen dash one sixty-seven and twenty dash one oh two to correct technical errors, to reserve chapters twelve to fourteen, and for other purposes.
Mr. Speaker.
Speaker Semenah, you have the floor.
I move for the passage of CB twenty dash two eighty-six on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty dash two eighty-six on first reading. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Orsmau, you have the floor.
What is chapter twelve to fourteen?
Chairman... Speaker Semenah, care to venture a...
Yeah, short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair.
Question.
No objection. Question has been called for. Congress will now vote on CB number twenty dash two eighty-six for first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk?
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Golland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Congress has now passed CB number twenty dash two eighty-six on first reading. Next bill?
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We are now on CB number twenty dash two eighty-seven.
Speaker.
Discussion? Floor Leader Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In order to avoid the confusion of the term "Speaker" being used by both of you, I hereby move that this Congress pass on first reading Bill number twenty dash two eighty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty dash two eighty-seven No objection, discussion is closed. We will now vote on CB number twenty dash two eighty-seven on first reading. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Golland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash two eighty-seven on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash two eighty-nine for first reading. CB number twenty dash two eighty-nine, it's a bill for an act to further amend section six hundred eleven of Title twenty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated, as amended by Public Law number nineteen dash one sixty-nine to correct a technical error and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre?
Move for the passage on first reading, the said bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty dash two eighty-nine for first reading. It's been moved and seconded that debate be closed. There are no objections. We will vote on the motion to close debate. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Debate is now closed. We will vote on CB number twenty dash two eighty-nine for first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Golland, Senator... Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted in favor.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash two eighty-nine on first reading. Next bill?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw and place on the Bill Calendar for action the following bills. CB number twenty dash three oh two and CB number twenty dash three oh three.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash three oh two and CB number twenty dash three oh three be placed on today's Bill Calendar. Any objection? The relevant rules are still suspended at this point. There are no objection, we will vote on the placement on said bills. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. CB number twenty dash three oh two and CB number twenty dash three oh three are placed on today's calendar for action. Chief Clerk, next bill?
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash three oh two for first reading. CB number twenty dash three oh two is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number nineteen dash one twenty-one, as amended by Public Laws numbers nineteen dash one thirty, nineteen dash one forty-two, nineteen dash one forty-five, nineteen dash one fifty-eight, twenty dash nine, twenty dash twenty-two, twenty dash fifty-one, twenty dash fifty-nine, twenty dash seventy, twenty dash one twenty-three, and twenty dash one sixty-two by amending section six thereof to change the allotment of certain funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of the State of Pompeii and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre?
Move for the passage of the said bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash three oh two be adopted by Congress on first reading. If no discussion, debate is closed. We will now vote on the said bill, CB number twenty dash three oh two, for first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Golland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Senator Neath, Senator Panuelo.
Amen.
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah.
Before I cast my vote, I just want to know, why change the allotment from the president to the governor of Pompeii State? Yes.
Yes. Speaker. Thank you for putting me on this part, Speaker. No, the... I can explain.
Let's have the Chief Clerk announce the results.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members voted in favor.
Thank you. With that, CB number twenty dash three oh two has passed Congress on first reading. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor. Who cares? first reading. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor. Care to... Chief Clerk, next bill?
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash three oh three for first reading. CB number twenty dash three oh three, it's a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash ninety-two, as amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one twenty-four and twenty dash one sixty-one, by amending Section Two thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein, to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Yap and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passes on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty dash three oh three on first reading. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Speaker Semenah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm, I just want to express my gratitude to the Yap delegation for beginning to understand that they have a responsibility to also take care of the medical expenses, obligations of our citizens in Yap. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Semenah. Any more discussion? If none, debate is closed. We will now vote on CB number twenty dash three oh three on second, on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk?
Senator Alek, Senator Aritos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo.
Aye.
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orsmau, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenah. Mrs. Speaker, twelve members voted in favor.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty dash three oh three on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Mrs. Speaker, there are none.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, next bill?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker. Chairman, Floor Leader Harper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I thought we were going down to resolution after bill calendar.
Miscellaneous business when Speaker called us back to a calendar.
So why don't...
Okay, so maybe I make a motion to go back to item number nineteen?
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress move back up to item number nineteen, Resolution Calendar. Floor Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I presume that the relevant rule are still suspended.
Still suspended.
And now I wish to make a motion to withdraw resolution number twenty dash sixty-two. I shall move, Mrs. Speaker.
Any second?
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. The motion to move back up to item number nineteen was not seconded. So, next item, Chief Clerk?
Point of privilege.
Point of privilege. State your point, Chairman Romolo.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I wish to pay the intelligence of this Congress to recognize two individuals who's in our, who's in the gallery this morning observing our session. And I ask that we give them a welcome and a round of applause to Mr. Moses Nelson and Tasio Sangitie from Juk.
Thank you, Chairman. It's always nice to our citizens in the gallery, especially former members of this body.
Speaker.
Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Yeah, I wanna follow suit. I have, I didn't notice certain citizens are here. I wanna also introduce them if they are still here. Let's give the three individuals a round of recognition and welcome to our chamber. Trey Lawrence, Chesney Ludwig, and Keone Wilson. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for recognizing those individuals. Next item, Chief Clerk?
Announcement, Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker, we, we were on miscellaneous business. Can we finish that out? I think we were there when Speaker called us back to item eighteen.
If there are no objections, we are still on miscellaneous business. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Yeah, Speaker, I, I just wanna enter into this record, just a short statement. Yesterday, understand, we passed the resolution regarding the joint communique on the presidential summit that was recently held in Palau. Congress adopted the resolution disapproving certain statements made in the joint communique. The statements had to do with the long-held policy of the FSM. As a former employee of Department of Foreign Affairs, Foreign Service Officer, I worked in certain capacities. I am amazed that we had to get to this point. Either that we discussed at the certain meeting a major change in our national policy, in which case it should have been known by all officials, including Congress. I believe, Speaker, that a lot of us were not aware of that change in policy, if it were, or else the officials in the delegation had no idea of the significance of the statement made, in which case I'm very disappointed that our officials let our head of delegation sign such a statement, in which case the department should have been, should be looking into its internal functioning. In any event, Speaker, I hope that for future reference, all communications should be scrutinized for compliance with national policy, especially an important communique such as that, which reflects or is representative of our head of states in the Micronesian region. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Statement is well received. Any more miscellaneous business? If none, Chief Clerk, next item?
Announcements, Mrs. Speaker.
Any announcements? Speaker Semenah? Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At one o'clock tomorrow in the hearing room, your Committee on XF will have oversight hearing with the External Affairs Department.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Members, take note. Chairman Figuerre, any announcement?
As earlier mentioned, your Committee on Ways and Means will have a meeting right after this afternoon's session.
Thank you, Chairman Figuerre. Take note. Vice Chairman Ned?
Chairman Perman?
No, from HSA.
Chairman Romolo? Chairman Perman? Or Panuelo? Chairman Panuelo?
Speaker, no announcement. Thank you.
Chairman Golin?
Thank you, Speaker. Your Committee on TNC will hold the hearing tomorrow morning at eight thirty. This is in regards to the supplemental from President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Golin. Vice Chairman Conman?
No announcement, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Chairman Orsmau?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just keep your eyes on the monitor in the hallway of our office. If there will be announcement, it'll be made in that, on the TV, and the committee is awaiting return of our legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmau.
We should use binoculars or something like that.
Floor Leader Harper, announcements and then your usual motion?
No announcements, Mr. Speaker. I move that we adjourn for today and come back tomorrow at ten AM.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress stands adjourned until tomorrow at ten AM. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say nay. We are adjourned until ten AM tomorrow morning.